Welcome, everyone, to our city council meeting on February 22nd, 2022. We should have held this meeting at 2:22 in the afternoon, it would be even better. Welcome, Mr. Dankert, take the roll, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Pashusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Obala.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
Osmah.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Looking forward to motion for number one, adopting of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I have number two, is a motion approving the minutes from our February 7th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries under I have number three, is recognition awards Arbor Day proclamation goes as such. Whereas trees and forest soils keep our lakes and streams clean by absorbing and filtering pollutants and sediments, and whereas forests prevent flooding and reduce stormwater by capturing and storing rainwater and snowmelt, which is then slowly released into our lakes, streams, and groundwater, and whereas careful management of our trees and forests protect drinking water and reduces the cost of water treatment, and whereas sound management of forest land, forested lands surrounding the Mississippi River ensure clean drinking water for more than 1 million Minnesotans, and whereas about three-quarters of Minnesotans get their drinking water from the forested parts of the state, and whereas planting and maintaining trees is a natural and easy way to keep our water clean, and whereas the last Friday of April and throughout the month of May, Minnesotans pay special tribute to our trees as natural resources and dedicate ourselves to the vitality of our forests. Now, therefore, I, Stephen M. King, Mayor of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day, and I do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2022, as Arbor Month in the City of Austin. That is our proclamation. And moving on to I have number four, is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. On to the public hearing, part of our meeting, I have number five, is a public hearing on street improvements on 21st Avenue Northeast, from 8th Drive Northeast to 14th Street Northeast, Project 22-101. Mitch, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'll be talking about six different street reconstruction projects. I'll go through each one, but a lot of them have the same information, so I will skip over those parts, so I'm not duplicating myself every time, but tonight we'll start with the 21st Avenue Northeast project, and this project, first of all, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. This project is located on the south side of Todd Park between 14th Street Northeast and 8th Drive or 11th Street Northeast, near the railroad tracks there, so it's about a 1,600-foot-long project. And here are some pictures of the existing conditions out there. You can see a lot of nasty patches in the road, a lot of cracked concrete pavement, and we have the intersection with 21st Avenue and 11th Street Northeast. It's not very good for sightlines, for turning traffic, or for turning movements, turning left or right onto this, off of this road. So, some of the project scope, what we plan to do on this project is remove the existing concrete pavement, remove the existing center median that's out there. We've actually already removed the trees that are in the median due to federal grant requirements, which I'll get into a little more later. And the new road, we'll plan on constructing at 40 feet wide with concrete and curb and gutter on both sides of the road. We plan to realign the intersection with 11th Street to improve the visibility and turning movements. And then on the north side of the road, we would plan on constructing a two-minute bike trail that would run the entire length of the road and connect to our trail system to the south on 8th Drive. And then, we were working towards reconstructing a railroad crossing on 11th Street as part of this project, and we have been working with the railroad on that since September, and we have not really gained any ground on that. The railroad has a lot of processes that are time-consuming to work with, as far as permitting and approvals, things like that, and it's just not moving forward quite fast enough, so we will likely be looking to delay that portion of the work until 2023. And then, when all the work's done, we would restore the grass on either side of the road. As far as underground work that we plan to do on this project, it's really not a whole lot, replacing storm sewer manholes and catch basins, and installing drain tile to create runoff for the groundwater that helps longevity of our roads. And Austin Utilities will also have work on the project, replacing water main and services, and they will also have some electrical work as well. So here's kind of a overall layout of the proposed road. You can see the existing median in the aerial photo, and then with our new road laid over top of that, so there'd be no median, and then we, the curve on the west end of the project, where we square up with the county road and create nicer sightlines for vehicles turning left or right, as well as nicer turning movements for vehicles making those turns. And then, you can see the trail on the north side of the road in orange, where that would link back to our trail system eventually, when we get the railroad crossing done, likely in 2023. So, let's talk about the schedule impacts a little bit. So, we anticipate this project starting in early July, likely after the 4th, and we expect it to be completed in October, depending on weather, which is a big factor in projects like this. And, so the impacts of the project, 21st Avenue will be closed during construction, but we will create temporary access for businesses that are located on 21st Avenue that don't have a driveway on an adjacent street, so we will be working with businesses on that. We'll be putting in advanced warning signage on 14th Street, near I-90. As you all know, the area, 21st Avenue and 14th Street is one of the main accesses to Todd Park, and can get pretty busy during the summer. So, we plan to keep that access open as much as possible, but there will be times when we need to shut it down to get some work done in that location. So, we will either be doing temporary gravel, or not removing that portion of the old road for as long as possible, something to that effect, to keep access open as much as possible. And then, the Todd Park access on 11th Street Northeast will be open at all times, so there will always be access to Todd Park, it just may not be the route that people are used to going on 14th Street. And then, some of the project benefits, we'll improve the ride and safety of the road, improve the drainage, make it look more visually appealing with a nicer street rather than patches everywhere, increase the lifespan, lifespan of underground utilities, decrease our maintenance costs, and the trail on the north side will improve our connectivity to our bicycle and pedestrian facilities and talent. So, the estimated project cost is 1.4 million, and 1.3 million of those are estimated as street improvements, with 100,000 of those dollars due to storm sewer improvements. And, like I said before, this project is funded by assessments, municipal, state, and street fund, and federal funds, so we have a federal, I believe it's $400,000 of federal funding on this project, and with that, there are a lot of documentation and requirements that we need to follow in order to spend those funds, and one of which is the removal of those trees. We have to do an environmental evaluation and an endangered species evaluation, and that stated that there's a potential for a certain species of bat that could be nesting in those trees, so they need to be removed before the end of March, before construction, just so they don't start nesting in there, and then we come in in the summer and remove those trees, so that's why those trees are down already. And plus, a bunch of other federal documentation requirements on this project. Then finally, the total projected assessment revenue for the project is around $111,000. And the way we establish those assessments is based on the assessment rates that the council approved in early January of this year, so this is a commercial street, and it is all commercial properties on this project, so the assessment rate is $80.22 per minute foot. And we also will be assessing for curb and gutter, because there's no curb and gutter out there currently, we only assess for the curb and gutter the first time that that is installed on a project, or on a street, excuse me. So, and there's some kind of example numbers for a generic lot that had 200 feet of frontage on it. And the assessment payment options, for those who are being assessed on this project, you'll send out a bill in late August or early September, you can pay the amount in full by October 28th of this year with no interest, you can pay at least 50% of the amount by October 28th without interest, and then the remainder would be added to your property taxes over a 15-year period with that, with a 3.75% interest rate. And then the third option would to not pay anything by October 28th, and the entire balance would be put on your property taxes over a 15-year period with that same 3.75% interest rate. And we do have a financial assistance policy, which, which doesn't apply to this project, but it applies to the others. If you're over 65, financially qualified, and live on the property, you can defer your assessment with interest until the property is sold at a later date. And then, project updates, on all these projects, I post weekly updates on our city construction website, we also do periodic updates on our City of Austin Facebook page, and if there's anything really important that we want residents to know, like the day we're going to start the project, or anything, any other important updates, we will hand out flyers door-to-door to ensure that everyone receives the information. And that is all I have for this project, if there are open up to questions from the council or public.
Thank you, Mitch. Council, first, any questions or comments for Mitch? If not, I invite any public here that would like to speak on the street project for I have number five.
I have a few questions.
If you could, Mr. Shammel, step to the microphone and give your name and address, if you could, that'd be excellent.
I own Shammel Electric at 1221st Avenue. So, I talked to Mitch, he said the assessment's going to be around $32,000, which, I understand the total cost, my question is the fairness of the assessment based on the wear and tear that's taken place on that roadway? We don't feel that we're responsible for the undue wear and tear. I understand you have to assess normal wear and tear, I don't think it's a fair assessment. And I sent an email with a list of questions that I had. Most of the damage that I see is based on the semi-truck traffic that's going past there for hornout and international paper, and for our business, we have a one-ton truck, but we're not doing that damage. So, those are the reasons I think it's unfair assessment.
Just my simple analogy, Kevin, is that I live on a street too, with, I just drive regular automobiles, and the street gets crushed by dump trucks and garbage trucks and everything else, but I still paid my street assessment. But Mitch, do you have anything to back up your assessment process with, for Mr. Shammel?
Um, I guess, the assessments are based on the lot frontage and the type of road, so if there was, you know, Mr. Shammel's lot on another commercial road in town that doesn't have as heavy of truck traffic, it would be the same assessment rate, because those rates apply to, to every commercial street in town. So, it's not, it's not necessarily the vehicle traffic that you're providing, it's just the, the size of your frontage is really what dictates these assessment costs.
Yeah, I know, we're probably not going to give you a good answer, Kevin, for your $32,000 bill, but at a 1.4 million dollar project, and the city does take care, or the federal government takes care of a lot of those costs, it's, we try to be as fair as we can to our businesses and our residents in these street projects.
Okay, I just thought it was undue damage that's occurred on that roadway, not unlike me running into a fire hydrant, I'm going to get charged by my insurance company. My point is that there's undue damage on that road, not caused by regular traffic, it's caused by the truck traffic.
Yep.
That was my point.
And then, when was that road constructed, Mr. Lang, do you know that history on that?
Yeah, so that road is 50 years old, it was constructed in the early 70s. We guarantee that our roads will last 35 years, and then through regular maintenance, we, we gain additional life beyond that 30 years, so a 50-year life on a commercial road such as this is, is really a pretty good lifespan for that, that age of concrete.
Thank you, I just hope that you see some value in that, at least in the history. But, thank you, Mr. Shammel.
Thanks for hearing my question.
You bet. Is there anybody else who looks, like to speak on I have number five? If not, council, I'll entertain a resolution if there's no more questions.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. And I have number six, is a public hearing on street improvements on 9th Street Northwest, 10th Avenue Northwest to 12th Ave. Northwest, and 10th Street Northwest, 8th Ave. Northwest to 13th Avenue Southwest, Project 22-102. Mitch?
Okay, so again, 9th Street and 10th Street Northwest, street reconstruction project. We've kind of been working our way west through this neighborhood over the last several years, and here's the next continuation of that. So, 9th Street, we plan to reconstruct from 10th Avenue to 12th Avenue, and then 10th Street would be from 8th Avenue to 13th Avenue. I've got a few photos here of the existing conditions, you can see this pavement's really deteriorated, cracked up, and soft spots in quite a few places. We have a lot of potholes and patching that have taken place by our, our street crews over the years. Again, more, more potholes and cracks and worn-out pavement. Again, another example of extensive, extensive patching that has been done. What we plan to do on this project is remove the existing curb and gutter and asphalt pavement. Currently, both streets are 30 feet wide, we would plan on widening both of them to 34 feet wide, so when we do that, we kind of split the difference on each side, and approximately two feet would go on the east side, and two feet would be widened on the west side. We'll put new curb and gutter in, new asphalt pavement, we will also remove and replace deficient sidewalk panels, things, what we're looking for there are things like cracks, sidewalk joints that have healed up, creating trip hazards, and any other deficiencies. And then we also install ADA-compliant pedestrian ramps to make those sidewalks accessible for those with disabilities, and then when we're all done, we will put sod back on the boulevards and get grass in there again. As far as underground work, we do have some storm sewer work with manholes and catch basins, and then we will also be replacing all of these sanitary sewer manholes throughout the project. And then again, we will also install drain tile with sump pump service lines stubbed to each property, and those service lines are for homeowners to connect their sump pump systems, if they have one, to give their drainage underground, so they don't have water pounding on their yard if their pumps, pumps frequently. And lastly, Austin Utilities will be replacing the water main and services throughout both streets, again, with some underground electrical crossings that will be constructed during this time as well. So, the schedule for this project, we plan on starting both projects in early May, or both streets, both 9th and 10th Street, in early May, and we expect to complete 9th Street in July, and 10th Street would be early September, again, all depending on weather. And we would, we do have some tree removals on this project, and they will take place prior to the pavement removal, to get those out of the way for construction. The impacts to residents on a residential project like this is, there's no access to the driveways with vehicles during the project. Residents' vehicles will be, will need to be parked on adjacent streets, if there are any boats, RVs, trailers, or other vehicles that the property owners wish to use, we ask them to remove them from their driveways or garage prior to the project, and find an alternate storage location that can be on the street, on another street, but if they want to use them, they'll maybe get those out prior to the project starting. And we do work with those individuals with disabilities as much as we can on these projects, so if there's someone out there that lives on one of these streets, has disability, we can get handicap parking spaces as close as possible to their house, we can also try and think of other creative things to help make their life easier during the project. And then, garbage and recycling is picked up on adjacent streets, garbage haulers are really good about picking up those cans that their company is responsible for when they see them on adjacent streets. And then, any boulevard sprinkler systems that people may have in the boulevard, other responsibilities of property owner to mark or remove prior to the project starts, the city and contractor are not responsible for any damage to those during the project. So, again, the benefits of, of a reconstruction project like this are improved ride and safety, improved drainage, improved, more visually appealing streets with getting rid of those, you know, patches everywhere, we'll have a nice uniform pavement, increase the lifespan of underground utilities, increase maintenance costs, and improved pedestrian improvements with the sidewalk replacement and pedestrian ramp replacement. So, the overall estimated cost for 9th and 10th Street is $930,000, and you can see the breakdown between street improvements, sanitary improvements, and storm sewer improvements. So, the project is funded by assessments, the local street fund, and the stormwater fund, and the wastewater treatment fund, taking care of the utility improvements. And we are projecting just over $250,000 in assessment revenue on this project. And again, slightly different than the last presentation, but, again, the assessment rates are established by, are approved by the city council every January, and this year, our residential street reconstruction assessment rate is $56.18, a lot with approximately 70 feet, 5 feet of frontage, would be just around $4,200 of assessment. And we do have a corner lot policy for residential streets that doesn't apply to commercial properties, or schools, or churches, but a residential corner lot, we assess the average of the two sides, so for example, if there's 100 feet on one side of the street, and 50 feet on the avenue side, the average is 75 feet, and that's the footage that we charge for the assessment. We also assess for sidewalks replacement, we have two different thicknesses of sidewalk, 4 inches is the standard sidewalk, 6 inch is the sidewalk for driveways, and we have those two different rates. So, a standard, approximately 5x5 panel of sidewalk is $190 for a 4-inch replacement, and about $260 for a 6-inch replacement, and all those sidewalks vary in size. And we have the same assessment payment options as the last presentation, and we provide the same project updates. Any questions?
Thank you, Mitch. Council, any questions for Mitch on I have number six? If not, I invite the public, either on Zoom or in person, if they have a question or comment regarding this project, to step forward and give their name and address.
Just a quick question, Thomas Woodhouse, 1205 9th Street, what's the assessment rate for commercial versus residential?
Mitch?
It's like $80, it's 56.
Or Stephen, the assessment rate difference between?
I just want to know the assessment rate.
It was like $80 for commercial, and it's 56 for residential.
And what does that give us for a percentage of city versus the resident pay? I don't even know, is it 70, 30? We're trying to get close to 40%.
Yep, like Mr. Austin said, commercial rate is $80.22 per foot, residential rate is $56.18 per foot. And on this project, Mitch gave those numbers, but we're assessing about 31% of the street-related costs to the adjacent property owners. The city, through our tax levy, is taking care of the remaining 69% of the cost.
Thank you. Thomas, that'll bear, answer your question? Anybody else wishing to speak on I have number six? If not, I'll look for resolution, council, I have number six, A, resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisements for bids.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number seven, is a public hearing on street improvements on 3rd Avenue Northeast, Oakland Place Northeast to 19th Street Northeast, Project 22-103. Mitch?
Sorry, I'm just getting my slides up here. Okay, so, 3rd Avenue Northeast project. This project is located between Oakland Place Northeast and 19th Street Northeast, about a, another 1,600-foot-long project. And you can see there's quite a bit of pavement deterioration over here, last year, we reconstructed 16th Street, kind of setting things up for reconstruction on 3rd Avenue this year. And just more pictures of the deterioration of pavement. A lot of the same improvements as the 9th and 10th Street project, where we'll take out the existing curb and gutter and asphalt pavement, and put in new, we do not need to widen 3rd Avenue Northeast at all, it's, it's currently 36 feet wide, and it will remain 36 feet wide, but we will do the same sidewalk panel replacements, pedestrian replacement, boulevard replacement. The big difference here is, we do have quite a bit of underground utility work, we have a lot of storm sewer that we will be replacing near the 16th Avenue, or, excuse me, 16th Street and 3rd Avenue intersection, trying to improve the drainage there. Currently, there's quite a bit of flooding during heavy rain, rain events, we hope to improve some of that, maybe not completely, due to, we're kind of restricted by the outlet that goes to East Side Lake under Oakland Place, but we'll, we'll set things up for a bigger line for Oakland Place to be replaced at some point in the future. Then we do have a bunch of sanitary sewer replacement as well, from 16th Street to 17th Street Northeast, we'll be replacing the entire main and all the manholes there. Again, we will have tile line installation along the entire length of the project, with some pump service lines to every house, then Austin Utilities has water main and service replacement, as well as some underground electrical work. This project, we're looking to separate into two phases, phase one would go from Oakland Place to approximately 18, 19 3rd Avenue, and that portion of the project would start in early May, and then, when Austin Utilities is nearly complete with their water main work, up to 18, 19 3rd Avenue, that's where we would start phase two, and that'll likely be in early July, and phase two will go from 18, 19 3rd Avenue to 19th Street, and then we expect to wrap up both phases in early October. And the intention is, we will get as much completed on phase one, like getting the rock down and maybe the curb and gutter before the final pavement, and allow residents to drive their vehicles on that rock, as long as there isn't any other construction activity in the way, because there is limited off-street parking in this area for residents, so we're, we're trying to do the best we can and make things go as quickly as possible there. Again, same project impacts as 9th and 10th Streets, parking on adjacent streets, removing vehicles from garages, handicap parking access, all that. And again, the same, same benefits to the streets as well. The total cost for this project is just over a million dollars, again, funded by assessments, our local street fund, stormwater utility fund, and our wastewater treatment plant fund, and we expect to generate about $226,000 of assessment revenue. Again, we have the same $56.18 assessment rate for residential street. Again, we have the same $56.18 assessment rate for residential street, same corner lot policy, same sidewalk assessment policy. And we have the same assessments, payment options. And again, the same project updates. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions or comments for Mitch? If not, look to the public. Any wish to comment or ask questions on item number seven of this project? Hearing none, I'm looking for a resolution from council for ordering improvements, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisements for bids, item number seven.
So move.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number eight is Public Hearing on Street Improvements on Third Street Northeast, 16th Ave., Northeast to Eighteenth, 18th Avenue Northeast, Project 22-104. Mitch?
Third Street Northeast Project, like the mayor said, will take place from 16th Avenue to 18th Avenue. This is just north of I-90, kind of near the Hormel corporate offices. Again, we've got some really deteriorated pavements on these four blocks and roadway. Same patches that you see in other, on our other street projects, things that need to be addressed. This project is similar to Third Avenue, where the roadway is already 36 feet, 36 feet wide, so we do not plan on widening the road at all. We'll be making the same pavement replacement, taking out the existing asphalt, putting in new curb and gutter, asphalt pavement, and fixing deficient sidewalks and upgrading pet ramps to ADA compliance. And then as far as underground work, there's really very little on this project. The only thing that will be constructed underground is our drain tile lines with some pump service lines to every property. And Austin Utilities does not have any work planned on this project. So again, we plan to start this project in early May, and we expect it to be completed in late June, depending on weather. Again, the quick schedule there is because there's very little underground work. It's mainly just replacing the roadway as it is, so that makes things go a lot quicker. We have the same, even though there's limited underground work, we still have a lot of the same access and project impacts to the residents as the other projects, as well as the same benefits. So the total cost, we are looking at about a $500,000 project here. Again, the majority of that is street improvements. We do have a very slight amount of storm sewer improvements at the 17th Avenue and Third Street intersection, and funded by the same sources. And we do expect to generate about $145,000 of assessment revenue on this project. And same assessment rates for both street and sidewalks, and the same payment options with the same project updates. Any questions?
Questions, counsel? Hearing none, I'll offer to the public, anybody wish to speak on this project number eight? Public hearing, please. Marion, step forward and give your name and address, please. Welcome, Marion.
Hi there, counsel, and Mayor Steve. My name is Marion Clennan. I live at 1711 Third Street Northeast in Austin. Originally, I wasn't going to come. I thought, oh, this is just, you know, the street project, and not a whole lot you can say about it. And then I was home yesterday and heard two semis go by again. And I've brought this up to the city engineer's office a few times. Sometimes there may be four or five in a week, sometimes there may be only two. But our neighborhood is kind of locked in, and there's only one way in and one way out. We're strictly a residential neighborhood, except for our neighbors to the east, the corporate office. And, but we have this off again, on again semi-truck traffic. And we're not a through street, so there shouldn't be semis driving through our neighborhood weekly. And I've asked for signs to be put in the neighborhood so the truck traffic stops, and I was told we couldn't do it. But then I see that there's one going into the neighborhood on the east side of the Hormel Institute that says, you know, it has a truck and the line through it. So truck traffic isn't allowed in that neighborhood, but they're allowed in our neighborhood. And we're still residential, the same as that neighborhood is. So I'm opposed to paying the full price if we're going to continue to have this truck traffic in our neighborhood, or put up a sign that says no trucks. And that's, that's basically all I have.
Thank you, Marion. My initial response, I guess, would be without, I'll let Mr. Lang or Mr. Winham speak too. But again, when you, I asked that question about who pays, you know, 30% roughly goes to the resident and 70% goes to other sources. So I think in the end, you aren't paying for the full price of that street. You are paying a portion, no doubt. But that's just my initial response. Mr. Lang, do you have anything on the truck traffic?
Just things we have looked at is making sure that when you make that turn from Sixth Street West onto 16th Avenue, that's essentially where the dead end begins. There's no outlet from there. So we do have no outlet signs in that location. We have heard of trucks getting lost, looking for different facilities and getting lost in the neighborhood. So we will, that we can't control, but we will continue to work with Hormel if they're getting any deliveries, to make sure that those are associated on Fourth Street, and try not to let those trucks get wandering into, into the neighborhood. That's our, that's our best hope.
I'll respond to that, too. I live in that neighborhood, and I, I've been there 20 years, and I've really, I've seen maybe once or twice where there's been a truck in there. And it has been because they're lost, they missed a turn or something. And I can guarantee you that the truck drivers hate entering our neighborhood because it's, it's hard to get out. So, you know, I don't, I don't think that it's, it's really a big issue enough to warrant a reduction in, in the cost, maybe a sign, but like Steve said, the no outlet sign should help. And I think the problem is, is that once they take that turn, they've got to find a way out. I mean, a sign isn't going to make a difference at that point, so.
So why is there a sign, though, on the east side of the Hormel Institute?
I think there's.
I mean, if they have, if they have trucks to get lost over there, why is it okay to stop it over there but not in our neighborhood?
I think that when you're entering that area, it's probably easier to get out of that neighborhood than it is ours. I don't, I don't know why there's a sign there and not ours, but I think ours is accidental, and I don't know if that site is accidental for trucks.
And, you know, the, the sign that is up there that says no access, I don't know how many people see that. I mean, that intersection is another, another thing. I don't know how many people I've had, you know, pull in front of me as I'm trying to turn into our neighborhood. But I don't see that sign that says no outlet, so how many other people see that?
Okay, thank you, Marion.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to speak on item number eight? If not, look for a resolution for item number eight, A, Resolutionordering Improvement: Approving Plans and Specifications and Ordering Advertisements for Bids.
So move the resolution.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number nine is Public Hearing on Street Improvements on Fifth Avenue Southwest, 20th Street, 27th Street Southwest to 19th Street Southwest, and 16th Street Southwest from 16th Avenue Southwest to 19th Avenue Southwest, Project 22-106. Mitchell?
I'm trying to get my screen sharing up here. Okay, so this next project is slightly different than the last, the last few we've talked about. These are, this is a mill and overlay project, again, located on 16th Street and Fifth Avenue Here's Fifth Avenue, then from 27th Avenue, or 27th Street to the dead end, what will be 29th Street someday. And then we have 16th Street from 16th Avenue to 19th Avenue, and then just a slight section, kind of rounding the curve where it turns into 17th Avenue. And this is all, this is near Woodson School, excuse me, Southgate School. So this project, some of the existing conditions aren't as bad as, as some of these other projects. Really, the pavement deterioration is in that top layer of asphalt. And we also have some patching that was done as the city constructed drain tile in these neighborhoods in the past couple of years. The drain tile, there's a lot of sump pumps, and these sump pumps run very frequently, so we needed to find an outlet for that water. And so the city constructed drain tile, and that's what the patches are for, so this mill and overlay project will address that. And this is Fifth Avenue. Again, the same thing, a lot of drainage issues and wet basements in this area. So the city, I believe it was last summer, constructed drain tile down each side of the road with the sump pump service connections for people to hook their sump pumps into. So we will take care of those patches with this paving project. So, and there, the 16th Street and the Fifth Avenue, both are slightly different in the work that will be going on there. So on 16th Street is a little more straightforward, where we're just going to mill off with a big machine like this, the top inch and a half of pavement. And then shortly thereafter, either the next day or within the next week or so, the contractor will come back and pave a new inch and a half of new asphalt over the top of the base. So that should be pretty quick. And then on, on Fifth Avenue, it's, it's the same deal, except the west end, from about 2906 or 2907 to the dead end, we're going to take the entire four inches of existing pavement off and put that back with four new inches. And then the rest of the road, we'll just have an inch and a half milling, and then an inch and a half paving. And so that, that last inch and a half will be paved over the entire length. We'll do a first lift on the west end, where we took the full depth out, and then we'll come back and pave an inch and a half across the entire street. And there's no underground work planned, or planned on either of these streets. Like I said before, it was all taken care of, the drain tile was taken care of in the past couple of years by the city. I did, I did forget one thing. At 27th Street, I don't have a picture of it, but there is a drainage gutter that goes across 27th Street on the north side of Fifth Avenue, and that really holds water. So we're going to replace that concrete and make that intersection drain a lot better. Both these streets will take place sometime in mid-June, after school is let out for the year. And we expect them to be completed over a two to three week period. We'll kind of give the contractor a window of time to come in. You know, you have to start between such and such a date and be finished with everything by another date. But the work shouldn't take that long. A day or so for pay, or for milling, and then another day or two for paving, and then there's some concrete work in between there. So there might not be work taking place every day during that period, but the project duration should be within that timeframe. And residents, these projects are a little less, less impactful to residents. The only time that you don't really have access to your driveway is during the actual act of milling and the actual act of paving. Other than that, there should be access to everyone's driveway throughout the project. And then the benefits of a project like this, we're improving the ride, we're improving the drainage, makes the streets look nicer without the patches and surface deterioration. It also decreases our maintenance costs to our city crews. You know, it takes us time and money to patch in those, those bad areas where you get a mill and overlay done, it should be maintenance-free for a while. And we estimate this project to be about $125,000, funded by assessments and our local street fund, and we anticipate about $42,000 of assessment revenue. And the assessment rates are a little different for a mill and overlay project. It's based on the frontage of your property, but we assess $6.35 per inch of asphalt per foot. So if we're, if we're doing an inch and a half mill and overlay, we take the 6.35 times our inch and a half, times your frontage, which in this example is 75 feet, would give us about $715. And then we still have that same corner lot policy, where we take the average of the two sides if you live on a corner lot. And we have the same assessment payment options as all of the other projects, and we provide the same updates as every other project as well. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Before we turn over to the public? Okay, ma'am, could you step to the microphone, please, and give us your name and address for the record?
I'm Julia Everson. I live at 2903 Fifth Avenue Southwest. My, as the city is aware, we have a lot of water on our street, and there's been a lot of work done there last year trying to eliminate some of this. One of the questions we have had is why don't we have a storm drain someplace on our street that would help alleviate when we get a heavy rain? Having the tile put in at the park has helped a lot because it's taking a lot of that water and dumping it on, is it 28 there, into tile. So we don't get as much from the park as we used to get, but we still get a lot of water. And I'm wondering, on the corner of 27th and Fifth, where the water comes around the corner, if there would be a storm drain put in there when you do the work there that would help take some of the water so that when we get heavy rain, it's as, as heavy, as high as the curb, curb to curb across the street, and then it backs up at the end of the road. The work that's been done there last year, we hope will alleviate some of that. But with the rains, some that we had this fall, although we didn't have a lot of different rains, we did have some, and the water's still backing up. So our concerns are if there would be a storm drain put there somewhere that would help alleviate that wash.
Mr. Lang or Mr. Winham, could you respond to Ms. Everson's question?
We, we did consider that. Looked, looked at the cost of extent, Shirley Thiel Park is kind of on the top of a hill. So we let that water run for a certain distance before we start to pick it up into storm drains. The intersection you mentioned, we looked at running storm sewer to that intersection. It would have required us to excavate and remove more of the existing asphalt pavement that we looked at and said, well, it's in relatively good condition. We looked at the cost of the storm sewer and decided now wasn't, was not the time to make that full-blown reconstruction and extension of storm sewer. It may come later, many years down the road, but right now, we looked at this was kind of the right fit, the right project for the area, without making it too extensive and too costly.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Everson? Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Any more public opinion or questions? If not, looking for a resolution for item number nine, A, Resolutionordering Improvement: Approving Plans and Specifications and Ordering Advertisements for Bids.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 10 is Public Hearing on Street Improvements on Seventh Avenue Southwest, 23rd Street Southwest to 24th Street Southwest. Twenty Third Street Southwest to Twenty Fourth Street Southwest and Eleventh Avenue Southwest from Tenth Avenue Southwest to Eighteenth Street Southwest and Twenty Third Street Southwest from Ninth Avenue Southwest to the Dead End. Project number twenty-two one zero seven. Mitch?
So this is the last one, and you'll be done listening to me talk for a while, hopefully. So here, here's a map of, it's probably easier to see this than to start off all those names of the roads. But here's what we're looking to do. We've got Twenty Third Street from the dead end. Originally, we did have it, Twenty Third Street extending all the way down to Ninth Avenue. But once we got into our design, we were doing some evaluation there and determined that the work that we would need to do on, on this section of the overlay is a little more extensive than we plan to do on this project. So we, we actually eliminated this one block between Eighth Avenue and Ninth Avenue from the project, just so everyone understands that. If there's any questions or comments about that, I'll take those. And then Seventh Avenue kind of turns into Twenty Third Street over here. And we have Eleventh Avenue that extends just beyond Eighteenth Street. And we do have a small, about two-hundred-foot section that goes down Nineteenth Street as well. And again, here's some photos of this project. Pavement that's in poor condition, but it, it's a little beyond what we can correct with a mill and overlay. So what this project will be is a full-depth reclamation, and I'll get into that in just a little bit here. Here's more patching and cracked pavement that can't be addressed with a traditional mill and overlay. And here's some pretty poor pavement as well. So, so what this project, we're planning to do is, it's called a full-depth reclamation, where if you look at this little diagram up here, a, a big piece of equipment comes in and it pulverizes that top, or the layer of asphalt and gets into the rock subbase. And it mixes it all together and kind of creates a uniform material that it lays back down behind the machine. And then that material is then graded and compacted to create a, kind of a, a new surface, a temporary surface, and a new subbase. And so once this machine goes by and we get everything graded and compacted, vehicles can drive on it again. And a certain period of time will go, go by, the contractor is looking for certain moisture content in that recycled layer. And we'll come back and put a new four-inch layer of asphalt on top of that. And we do not have any underground utility work planned on this project either. So again, the schedule is similar to the mill and overlay project where we expect to start in late June after school's out and expect the project to be completed over a couple of week period, weather permitting. And there will be access to driveways during the project, except during those, those processes of reclaiming and paving. And there's a lot of the same benefits, but one additional thing to note would be, this is a really cost-effective repair and it's environmentally friendly because it's using all that existing material and building it back into the same road. So you're not hauling material away and using, you know, gas and time and other materials brought in to replace it. So it's a environmentally friendly solution. And the estimated cost for this project is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and we expect to generate just under a hundred thousand dollars of assessment revenue. Again, we have the, the same mill and overlay assessment rate for this project. The exception here is we have four inches of new asphalt that will be paved so that six dollars and thirty-five cent assessment rate multiplied by four inches and then by your lot frontage. And we do provide the same corner lot policy for those who live on corner lots. And we do have the same payment options, the same updates. Any questions?
Questions, counsel? Or the public on Zoom or in person? If not, looking for resolution.
Mayor, if I could just add, on all these, wanted to let you know, we, we did have a public informational meeting last Wednesday, more of an informal process where we invite the same residents, provide the same information. We had about twenty-five properties represented at that informal meeting, plus the folks that you seen here tonight. So just want to let you know that there's other people calling, asking questions that we get information out to. When we, when we look at our street reconstruction program for this year, everyone's hearing about labor shortage, supply chain, all those sorts of things. That does potentially have an impact on our street reconstruction projects as well. Likely in our material delays with our concrete structures and concrete pipe that we're getting from a select few manufacturers. We could see some delays on our projects with that. Also, we're, we're expecting some increased costs mainly due to the cost of oil and how that relates to fuel, asphalt, all of our roadways that have asphalt pavement on them. We're anticipating to see an increase from last year on that. And then the, the labor issue. We, we seen some labor issues last year, seen some crews that got, had COVID go through their, the crew and caused upwards of a four to six-week delay through a lot of our projects last August and into September. So we're not immune to something like that happening again. So Mitch has done a good job with laying out all these projects, looking to get started as early as possible. But there are just some things outside of our control that, that always, like weather, we always say weather. But there are other factors now, even on top of weather, that can impact our projects, whether it be cost or schedule. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Lang.
I have, can I ask a question to Mitch or Stephen about the reclaiming? When do you do that versus not do it? I guess I'm trying to understand it because it seems very cost-effective and like a slick, easier process.
Sure. It, it's kind of, it, it depends on several factors. You know, if you're looking at the pictures I have up here, you know, if we did a mill and overlay on this project, it would crack in the exact same spots and we'd have a, a terrible road in a short amount of time. What reclaiming is good at is roadways that, you know, we don't have any underground utility improvements that need to be done. And there's a lot of cracked pavement. What that, what it does is it pulverizes everything. So there's no more existing cracks that can show through. Where if you do that on a mill and overlay project, those cracks will show through in, in a couple of years. When you, when you reclaim it, it gets rid of all those cracks and you kind of start fresh. The reclaimed material provides a, a good base to pave on top of. The challenging thing, like I said before, is you, underground utility work. A lot of these projects, we're doing sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water main upgrades, as well as curb and gutter. So in, in those cases, it, it's just really not feasible to do a reclamation. But, you know, we, we may get to the point on, on some projects, not all, that we're always going to have reconstruction. But we will be, you know, looking for the right opportunity to, to use this reclaim process, areas where we don't have much underground work or areas where the pavement isn't quite ready for a full reconstruction, those type of things. And I think the rule of thumb is you can kind of expect about a twenty-five-year lifespan on a reclaimed project compared to, you know, about fifteen years on a mill and overlay or the thirty-five years plus on a full reconstruction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments on item number ten? Looking for resolution?
So I move the resolution.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Mitch, for all that information. On to item number eleven is a resolution setting public hearing for March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two for street improvement project assessments.
So I move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. On the, on his way out the door, Kevin's going to talk to us about number, item number twelve, a motion approving the donation to Spruceup Austin in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars. Yeah?
I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Regarding this park, Honor Guard's Park is the corner of Eighth and Eighth, just south of the Hormel Plant. Until the nineteen nineties, it was known as American Legion Park, but due to some infrastructure changes and street changes, my understanding, is that it became barren. There was no longer anything there. So Spruceup at that time jumped in and did a lot to it and renamed it Honor Guard's Park with the assistance of a lot of different organizations in town. And now it's in need of work again. There's some overgrown shrubberies, deteriorating concrete, and they'd like to refurbish it. So they're looking for a donation, something we didn't have budgeted this year, and hoping that this city can come up with a forty-five hundred dollar match to the other dollars that have been put into that contribution pot so far.
Excellent, excellent example of a public-private partnership once again here. So, thank you, Kevin. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Nelson or comments? Otherwise, look for a motion for item number twelve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin. Item number thirteen is a resolution approving the contract with WSB for sump pump inspections in the northeast sector of town. Stephen?
Yeah, just want to confirm that that is WHKS, not WSB when we make this motion. But for this project, we, in twenty-twenty, we didn't do any sump pump inspections. And we got one year behind on that portion of our INI program. So last year, in twenty-twenty-one, we completed all of our other work in the northeast quadrant as it relates to manhole inspections and evaluating our system. Our last item now to complete the northeast quadrant is to follow up with our sump pump inspection program. We have about nineteen hundred homes in this area. And WHKS has estimated a cost of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars to complete this work. And we would recommend, this would be now our, what are we on, our fifth year of doing this, I believe? And we have a few more areas to do, but we would recommend continuing this work with WHKS.
Thank you, Stephen. And with the correction of WHKS, I'll look for a motion for item number thirteen, or resolution, sorry.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Over the years, I, like other council folks, have gotten probably some calls on this sump pump program. And I had the best defense of that I would also be a loser in this program, that I now officially have a sump pump installed in my basement that will never, ever, ever, ever go off. Happy to support the city in their projects.
I may have used you as an example last year, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, feel free. Thank you. Item number fourteen is a resolution approving the MINDOT grant for an airport zoning update. Stephen?
Thank you for your support of the program, Mayor. Appreciate it. On the airport zoning grant, we, we upgraded our airport in the mid-two thousands, extending the runway approximately a thousand feet. And we started at that time to update our zoning as well to accommodate that new length. Our, our old zoning goes back to nineteen seventy-seven approximately, and our airport has made multiple changes since then. So we need to pick that back up and complete the zoning around the airport to protect our, our infrastructure and our investment that we have there. So this project, which is funded sixty, excuse me, seventy percent by the state and thirty percent locally, we'd be looking at almost a fifteen thousand dollar investment on the local portion with thirty-four thousand coming from this state grant. We would recommend, Council, move this grant forward so we can begin this project.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Lang? Okay, item number fourteen, looking for resolution.
So I move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number fifteen is a resolution approving an American Rescue Plan Agreement for Airport Maintenance and Operations. Stephen?
This will be our third rescue grant. They were all a little bit different in, in dollar amounts. This one is in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars. And it will go toward our normal maintenance and operation procedures that we have at the airport. We will continue to utilize our fifty-one thousand dollars of state grant first. And then any additional expenditures that we have, we would then apply toward this, this grant. And this grant is good until September of twenty-twenty-four. So we have some time to, to pick away at it. And we have some different other eligibility requirements listed there. And again, this is a federal grant coming through the, the different rescue and different CARES Acts and things that we've gotten through the federal government.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions, Mr. Lang? Looking for a resolution for item number fifteen?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number sixteen is a resolution approving exceptional performance pay for the Director of Administrative Services. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. Mr. Dankert's contract provides for up to three percent for exceptional service pay to his base salary. There's a recap that Mr. Dankert provided for twenty-twenty-one as well as twenty-twenty-two, goals included in the packet. The amount would be just over four thousand dollars. Council action is requested to approve the performance pay.
Thank you, Craig. Tom, that is always money well spent, butter.
Yes, definitely.
Uh, thank you, Craig, for the explanation, and I'm looking for a resolution to approve.
So I move the resolution.
I second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Definitely an aye.
Motion passes six zero, and thank you.
It was touch and go, Tom.
Last year, we immediately hit him with a mill and overlay assessment to take his side. Are we doing sidewalks from this year?
Yeah, do something. I, I agree.
I got a street goes behind me also.
On to item number seventeen is a resolution accepting donations of the city, and there are several with regard to the library. So I just wanted to first read off, you know, I'm not going to read off all the names. I think people, the intention is to give them in the memory of someone who either passed away or in honor of someone still alive. But these are the, these are the folks that we're honoring by these donations. Levon Griffin, Donna, Tim Lowell, Lois Paulson, Mary Kellogg, Ruth Lindstrom, Barb Orchet, Sharon Wagner, Sally Kolb, Arlene Schalls, Janet Delaney, I'm sorry, Janet Delhanti, Margie Voss, Deborah McGee Verducci, Jim Wagner, Connet Remner, John Beckman and family, Mercedes Nordstrom. Also, we're going to, the folks that just gave to give to the library for general expenses are Mary Nelson, American Legion Unit ninety-one, Glenn and Sally Baker, Austin High Special Education Team, Mark and Susan Nagel, Mary Dee Otsdahl, Walter and Patricia Stevens, and John and Julie Beckman. Give me a moment. There is also some, I believe. Please talk amongst yourselves. Pull it up. There you go. There was five thousand dollar gift from the Eagles to the Disc Golf Fund and a memorial for Mabel Gelman, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. So the total gift to the library for all those folks honoring people or giving general expense was ninety-nine hundred and twenty dollars. So with that, Counsel, I'd certainly entertain a, a resolution to approve those donations to the library.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Councilman Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number eighteen is a motion granting the Planning and Zoning Department authorization to remove junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at nine oh-two Ninth Ave Southwest, the Caniffle property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Citizens addressing the council, anybody on Zoom wishing to address the council? If not, honorary council member comments? William? It's this much fun every time, isn't it? Yes, it is. Reports and recommendations. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. We met with SEH, who was our... We met with SEH, who was our engineer on the wastewater treatment project. Man, City of Mankato bid out a wastewater project at their city. They anticipated it being $40 million, came in at $60 million. So the inflationary cost increase are real and a concern for us as we look towards our plant here in Austin. As a result, we're asking Senator Dornick and Representative Mueller to increase our request to $20 million from the 14.5. So wanted to let you know that we're advancing that for their consideration as the bonding bill will make its way through the legislature. Mr. Dankert and Mr. Lang have a couple items on a couple staff retirements.
Stephen?
Many of you know Joe Sunderman. He is retiring at the end of this week. Joe started with us back in January of '85, so 37 years ago, and worked, had the, had the motivation incentive to work his way up through the street department. And 10 years later, in '95, he became a foreman, kind of assistant at the street department. And then in 2012, he was promoted without going through any interview process or anything, just based on his past history and his knowledge, was promoted to the street superintendent where he's been, where he's been for the last 10 years. So, you know, I think, I'll end up saying more about Joe in December when, when we have the real recognition. But one thing I've learned in my position that is that I can't know everything, but what I need to do is know who I can contact that knows that answer. And Joe has always been one of those guys. He, he's a, he's been a great employee. He's been a great coworker and friend. And I've relied on Joe in many instances to talk about, you know, how was this done in the past? Or, or, you know, what do you know about this or that? And he's, he's always been a great resource. So he's going to be a huge loss for us, but we're, we've promoted Tony Martin to, into his position. Tony will do a great job, and we're in the process now of filling Tony's position. So just wanted to recognize Joe for his 37 years with the city and his dedication that he's had. So thanks, Joe.
I'd also like to recognize him, Police Department and the Street Department, our line people do work together quite a bit, whether snow emergencies, accidents, things that get broken. You know, we had the storm damage come through. And again, I worked with Joe when I was a patrolman. Our current staff works with him and just a go-getter, positive attitude, always willing to work with us, always willing to put in the time to find a solution to help the city of Austin and on our behalf too, the Police Department. Miss that relationship we had with him.
Thank you. Tom?
And I'll throw that motion on Joe. Joe, anytime you needed something done, you asked Joe, and it got done. You didn't have to worry about it, so. But we are also having a retirement, Joyce's favorite IT director. Don Tomlinson's last day here will be the 28th of February. He's actually worked, he's taking vacation till the end of March, and that's his official retirement date. Don was our first IT director we've ever had. We, when we had internet installed, we contracted out with a place in Rochester. He'd come once a week to fix our stuff. But Don, again, 21 years, same type of attitude. You need something done, Don will take care of it. You don't really have to ask him a second time to do it. So we're fortunate that in his term here, we never got attacked with ransomware or anything like that. And the systems kept running. We had some fiber lines cut, but we were able to negotiate through those all the time. So again, we'll have a retirement plaque for Don, but his last day will be Monday, the 28th. We're having a little pizza party for anybody who's interested.
Excellent. Yeah, two excellent employees, great losses to the city, no doubt. We wish them well in their retirement. Just as I get thinking here, I wonder if the, I don't know the history of why we do the recognition in December or January. I wonder if it'd be more meaningful to the retiring employee to have it more current? And as we, as we come around these things, you know, rather than waiting 10 months to honor Joe and these are some great words that were just said, I think we need to be a little more timely on that, just so we don't lose him. You know, maybe they go winter, winter away after their retirement for whatever the reason is. But I would certainly just like the council to think about just having that a little more timely as these retirements pop up, that we do them kind of in real time. So maybe we could get even, start with Joe and, and Don, you know, whenever that is the most, next meeting or two, if they can swing it.
Love it.
That'd be helpful. All right. Thank you. On to City Council then, right? Paul, anything?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Obala?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Pretty sweater, buddy.
What's that?
Pretty sweater. You lighten the, lighten the.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Rebecca?
I'd like to congratulate the Austin Dance Team on their state victory on Saturday. Great job to all those girls. They've worked hard. And just congratulations, and I hope they really enjoy this win for Austin.
Excellent. Posty?
Just a bit of an update from Discover Austin. You may remember in the last budget, we approved some recovery monies to go towards a new position. Pleased to report that Sarah Wilson started that position this month and has already hit the ground running with lots of ideas and contacts to bring new groups and things to town. So excited to see how that blossoms over the next years.
Thank you. Joyce?
Congratulations to our retirees and even, even Don. I will put that out there. I'm going to have to find somebody else to pick on. And also to Kevin Nelson, I wish you the best in your new adventure in South Dakota. And it's been just a really great pleasure working with you the last almost three years. Save the date for the Fourth Avenue Fest coming up in June. I know that seems far away, but it's actually not. So that's on June 8th. And then the Austin Area Arts is planning an equity conversation. So that's for board members and commission members. If you're interested, you can RSVP through the Austin Area Arts. That's it.
Thank you, Joyce. Yeah, also, Kevin, congratulations on your new job out in, was it not Chamberlain, South Dakota? Mitchell, Orange Palace. Thank you for your time and your service here, and good luck. Your last day is March 4th, if I recall. Also, to Stephen and his crew, you know, these assessments get real difficult. A lot of people disagree with how the process works and paying their share. But no matter what question or concerns get addressed, the street department and the engineering department always comes, comes through with these answers. So thank you for the work involved in this. Just highlights the expertise on a day like today. So I have nothing else. Looking for a motion to adjourn to Monday, March 7th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and there is no work session, so you'll have to eat your.
Don't know what you'll do with all your.
Mitch worked us hard enough.
Don't know what they'll do with all their free time.
That's right, yes.
Recording stopped.
Stephen, it sounds like the solution is to, we should have just installed.